It is six thirty P M. And I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
For which is stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Tonight I have a few things that I'll go over quickly. This past Friday, I was at the Hands for Art event at W N B Financial. And they were, the Hands for Art contest is done in recognition of the Child Abuse Prevention Month. They have drafted a proclamation for me. Every child is a precious and unique gift who deserves the security of a loving and nurturing home. When supported by encouraging families and safe, strong communities, all children have the chance to reach their full potential and access the unlimited opportunities that our great community has to offer. To realize this truth, we must dedicate ourselves to the noble cause of protecting and caring for our children. To improve the statistics and the well being of our community's children, we must become more aware of the signs and symptoms of child abuse and take action as necessary. We should not allow pride nor discomfort to prevent us from helping a child who is truly suffering. We must be a community committed to taking action in the face of adversity and uncertainty, particularly when done to enhance the safety or security of children. I encourage all Winonnans to nurture the children in their lives and to extend a hand to those in need of love, protection, or even just attention. Only together can we put an end to the tragedy of child abuse and neglect. I'm confident that our combined efforts in combating these evils will help create a world that is more tender, compassionate, and inviting to our children for centuries to come. Now therefore, I, Scott Sherman, Mayor of Winona, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. This evening, we also want to recognize Savannah Locan from Cotter High School. The city of Winona is proud to recognize Cotter High School student Savannah Locan as a state speech champion. Savannah competed at the Minnesota State High School League Tournament on Saturday, April twenty-ninth in Apple Valley. Speech consists of thirteen categories and the top twenty-four entries in each category are represented at the state meet. Savannah was named the champion speaker in the category of Serious Interpretation Drama. On behalf of the city council and the Winona community, I congratulate Savannah Locan on her outstanding achievement. This Friday evening, there will be an event at the Band Shell down by the lake. It will be a community gathering and prayer service for Madeline Jane Kingsbury. The Kingsbury and neighbor family have invited the community to gather there at seven thirty P M. This Friday, May fifth, at the Band Shell. They have also, basically, they want to make sure that people are thanked for their efforts along the way in trying to bring Maddie home and that also they want to continue to recognize the fact that she is still missing. I do have a press release from the police department in regards to Madeline Kingsbury. As the search for Madeline Kingsbury continues, the Winona Police Department and Winona Emergency Manager are making a new request to property owners in Winona and Fillmore Counties. This is part of our ongoing efforts to find Maddie and bring her home to her family. We are asking property owners in these counties to report old wells from before nineteen twenty-five, old homesteads and old windmills or windmill bases. We are also asking people to report sinkholes that are accessible by car. This information is not included in available records and could lead to new searches. We're asking people with old wells, homesteads, windmills, or sinkholes on their property to report them to search at C O dot Winona dot M N dot U S. We are also partnering with Maddie's family and requesting all property owners in Winona, Fillmore, and Houston Counties place a blue checkmark in an easily visible location if you consent to having your property searched. Volunteers will only be looking for Maddie, signs of a disturbance or something out of the ordinary. They will not be entering any homes or other structures on the property and will follow all state and local laws and postings on the property. Volunteers will also confirm with the property owner that it's okay to search. Once they have searched, volunteers will tie a blue ribbon around a mailbox or post, letting others know the property has been checked. If you have already searched your property, you can also tie a blue ribbon outside to let others know. If you want to volunteer for the search, we ask you to make safety your top priority. Please do not search alone. Don't search dangerous areas and don't enter the water. We don't want anyone to get lost or hurt, which would also pull resources from our search for Maddie. We continue to receive tips every day through Crime Stoppers. We review every tip and have resources ready to respond. If you have information you think could be valuable, please call Crime Stoppers at one eight hundred two 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 tips or online at CrimeStoppers M N dot org. There is a fifty thousand dollar reward for information that leads us to Maddie. The investigation is active and ongoing. We are not prepared to identify a suspect or person of interest at this time. We remain committed to finding Maddie and if warranted, hold accountable the persons responsible for her disappearance. Thank you to everyone who has helped in the search for Maddie. The outpouring of support has been overwhelming. Please keep her family and friends in your thoughts. Lastly, I have a proclamation regarding Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day. Proclamation, whereas the tenth day of May twenty twenty-three is designated as Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day and is set aside as a day to honor all fallen law enforcement officers. And whereas the well being of all citizens of Winona County and the United States is preserved and enhanced as a direct result of the vigilance and dedication of law enforcement personnel. And whereas more than seven hundred thousand men and women at great risk to their personal safety presently serve their fellow citizens as guardians of peace. And whereas more than two hundred and forty-five peace officers across this nation were killed in the line of duty during twenty twenty-two. And whereas all Winona area law enforcement agencies use this day to honor our fallen fellow officers who've made the supreme sacrifice for the citizens of Winona County and the city of Winona. And whereas this day also serves as a reminder of the dangers faced currently serving law enforcement officers in their day-to-day activities. And whereas our officers do not serve in a vacuum but are assisted in many ways by the citizens of Winona and Winona County. Now therefore, I, Mayor Scott Sherman, hereby proclaim Wednesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-three as Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day in the city of Winona and call upon all residents to join area law enforcement agencies in honoring our fallen officers. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Winona to be affixed this first day of May twenty twenty-three. I will now ask City Manager Chad Wolf if he has any comments.
Mayor and council, just one item tonight. The city wishes to recognize the service of Police Officer Ed Wooden, who retired on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, after twenty-four years of service to the citizens of Winona and thirty total years as a police officer. Officer Wooden began his career as a peace officer in nineteen ninety-three with the city of Litchfield. He then served five years with the city of Blaine Police Department before starting his career with the city of Winona on October fifth, nineteen ninety-eight. Officer Wooden served his career assigned to patrol duties on both the day and afternoon shifts. Officers that worked with him have described him as a knowledgeable and skilled officer who always had a good story to tell. Officer Wooden was very interested in new officers joining the force and would take them under his wing to teach the finer points of police work to meet the department's standards and excel in their career. The city appreciates Officer Ed Wooden's twenty-four years of service to the Winona community and we wish him a long, healthy, and happy retirement. That's all for this evening.
Thank you. I do have one more comment. I forgot to mention this. We will be pulling item three point seven, which is the license agreement with Winona Boathouse Association at the request of the Boathouse Association. That will be coming back to council hopefully by next meeting. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Heima.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Iden.
Here.
Porczakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Tonight, we have two required public hearings. For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation and then I'll ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. Each person needs to clearly state your name and address. You'll be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in the discussion by city council.
Under the required public hearings, item two point one is the Garvin Heights rezoning from R one to R one point five.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Carlos Espinoza, Senior Planner here. I'm doing a brief presentation on this agenda item at the beginning of the public hearing here. So the rezone request from R one, which is our low-density residence district to R one point five, which is our low to medium-density residence district, is proposed for Zero Garvin Heights Road. Zero Garvin Heights Road is located immediately across Garvin Heights to the south of the Crestview subdivision and immediately to the west of the Meadows subdivision in the city here. And I'm going to get my clicker and go to the next slide. You'll see the subject property at the center of your screen circled in red. It's approximately nine point three acres. As I mentioned, it's immediately south of the Crestview subdivision, which was approved and constructed in the early two thousands and immediately to the west of the Meadows subdivision, which was approved in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And homes are being added to the subdivision as we speak and as time passes. The subject property is a portion of the larger property at Zero Garvin Heights. Zero Garvin Heights is the yellow area that is highlighted in the screen that extends all the way to the south to the city limits of the city of Winona. The entire parcel was the subject of a proposed development beginning in twenty eighteen and going through twenty twenty, twenty-one. As part of that proposed development for the larger parcel, the entire parcel was rezoned in twenty eighteen from agricultural natural resources to R one, its current zoning. So right now, the subject property is on a portion of that larger property at Zero Garvin Heights Road. And the proposal is to go from R one to R one point five. The larger development on the property was not pursued. It was a seventy-three unit development, but they ran into issues with bedrock near the surface of the proposed development area. That meant it was pass for utilities and roads and anything where you had to get into the earth. Pass went up significantly and so the applicants or the developers have refined their proposal and revised their plans and are now proposing R one point five zoning for the subject property. And that would set up an approximate fifty-three unit twin home slash single family development on the subject property. So if we go to the next slide here, you'll see the subject property that is outlined in red. You'll note that that is about two-thirds of the overall future subdivision that would come in potentially after rezoning here. The first third of the overall subdivision is actually already zoned R one point five and that was zoned with the Meadows development that happened in two thousand eight. So this specific request relates to the westerly two-thirds of the proposed subdivision. As I mentioned, the proposed subdivision would have a twin home style setup. So you would have fifty-three potential dwelling units on the property. But those lots can always be combined and you can put a single family on, a single family home on two twin home lots. You see that currently in our Valley Oaks seventh subdivision right now, where that is set up for twin home style development. There are a number of twin homes out there, but a few property owners have bought two parcels and are constructing single family homes on the lots. I will just note that the future subdivision for the area that's on your screen right now will be back for preliminary plat, final plat, other approvals before the city council. And at that time, we'll take a look at details such as roads, stormwater, bluffland considerations. This item only relates to the proposed rezoning. The commission reviewed the proposal on April tenth and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning for the reasons listed on your screen. Tonight, council options are to approve, deny, or table slash postpone the item if there are outstanding questions. But I am here for questions right now if there are any. Pam?
Go ahead, Pam.
So how does this new proposal, how is it affected by the bedrock and issues that affected the previous one?
Well, they know a lot more than they did previously. And if the developer's representative comes up and speaks next, he could probably address that a little bit more.
Okay.
George.
I believe you mentioned one of the most expensive operations of these subdivisions. The city utilities are already out there, right?
City utilities already run right adjacent to the subdivision.
Right, so there's no, be no problem hooking up to them.
That's correct. They are in the road.
Jeff?
And then, just so that I understand this, Carlos, so when we're moving from R one to one point five, what's the size difference of the lot that's required minimum?
Sure, so for essentially, if you're going from R one to R one point five, if it were developed under R one zoning, you'd be looking at about forty units.
Okay.
And so with this, R one point five, you're looking in the fifty-three range.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Carlos? No? Okay. We'll wait for public hearing. Okay, all good. Thanks, Carlos. Appreciate it. I will now open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding item two point one, govern height rezoning, R one to R one point five?
Hi, my name is Brian Woodley. I'm with Johnson Schofield Land Surveying. I represent Pro-Gro Leasing Co. They're the local developers. They have a business out of Goodview, which is where we're at as well. I'm at forty-two forty West Fifth in Goodview. Carlos covered everything very well. We had the subdivision approved and ready to go and it just came down to a financial situation where lots would have cost people upwards of a hundred thousand dollars just to break even on the construction cost because bedrock and just material costs have increased so much that there was just, it just wasn't feasible to do. So we've kind of gone back to the drawing board. And it's the increase in density that's going to afford us to cover the costs of the extra cost of utilities and stuff. It'll still be really tight and we'll know more as we progress. This is just the first step in a long line of steps that we have to do. So we'll be back with development details and all sorts of stuff when we come up with the actual engineering plan and stuff. So, but I'm just here for questions, so.
I think we'll take questions during discussion. We'll just, that's appropriate, right? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody else from the public wish to speak regarding the govern height rezoning, R one to R one point five?
Yeah, my name is Jerry Kavalaski and I live at two seven one two two Little Trout Valley Road, South Winona. And I own a couple of lots there in the Meadows Development. The one in particular is lot number eight and the address is ninety-five Buckridge Drive. Right adjacent to that lot is a little triangular piece of property that's, I'm going to guess it's a V F D and probably a pumping station or a lift station. I don't know what's in there. There was a fence around it. They took that down. So my, I mow the grass every week when the grass is grown and it's a lot easier to mow. But anyway, and the city mows the little triangle part. But I'm just wondering, what is that? And is it serving this new development? And will it be required to get bigger or run more? Or I don't even know what it is, so that's my question. It's right adjacent to my lot.
Okay.
And will it require increased size? Or, yeah, I don't even know what it is, if it's a lift station or a pumping station or, so. I don't, I don't live there, so I don't even know if it makes noise.
Sure.
Thanks.
I'm proud of you. Carlos, could you answer that for us?
So the piece of property that the person who just spoke was talking about is basically right where the curve happens on Buckridge Drive. And if it is a pump station that's right there for that development, we calculated all of the stormwater regulations with the Meadows Development, which is currently zoned R one point five and we're bringing it up on the screen here. So everything you see in orange there along Buckridge Drive is part of the Meadows subdivision. And so all of the stormwater requirements were accounted for in the existing infrastructure in the Meadows subdivision. That stormwater facility you see right off the road there is sized to accommodate the whole development. So the answer to your question is if it is a utility that was not already a part of this development and it needs to get bigger as a result of this development, it will in order to service it and we'll review that through the preliminary plat and final plat details.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak regarding the govern height rezoning, R one to R one point five? Do you have another question? Yeah, come onto the mic, please.
Yeah, so anyway, just based on what Carlos said, I thought, well, you know, is it going to encroach on the piece of property I own there if it had to grow? Or will it be extended in a relocated area? I, that's, I'm just, yeah. Yeah. So. Sure. Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Hey, I'll ask one more time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding item two point one, govern height rezoning, R one to R one point five? Hearing no one, I will close this portion of the public hearing. Anybody from council? Have any comments, questions, discussion? Steve?
I have a question about the parcel that is to the south of the subject parcel. I think the part that is not being developed, is that going to be then, then I guess left as it is? And perhaps it could be developed when economic trends more favor it? Or is it going to be, is it destined to be, I don't know, walking trails or left in a natural state? Or do we have any comment on idea as to what that land might wind up being?
Councilmember Young, yes, so for the remainder of the property at Zero Garvin Heights Road there, that is what we would say as very highly developable property that's right adjacent to city utilities. So we see that supporting some type of development into the future. The type of layout, the type of unit mix, of course, has to do with what we're able to do in the future with that property.
Okay.
But I do see it as a very developable parcel moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
A couple of questions and I'm going to play the new guy card here. So when we're putting in a new, you know, this has some history to it. And so obviously you said it was originally platted before and then they didn't develop it and now we're back to it again. So anything that we're doing here, all of the current applicable codes and standards are going to be applying. Nothing is grandfathered in from the past or anything like that, correct?
The only thing that would be grandfathered in is the portion of the property that's adjacent to Buckridge Drive that's just to the east of the subject property, where we have already reviewed that as part of the adjacent subdivision for all of the requirements. It won't be grandfathered in per se, but all the requirements have been met. So.
Okay.
The additional impacts would just be analyzed for the subject property, which is the area that's surrounded in red on your screens.
Okay, and then the second question is, you alluded to that this is the first step of a multi-step process, not having gone through this before. Could you just give me a quick summary as to how this is going to proceed and how many more times it's going to come before us? Just so that I've got a sense as to the steps along the way.
Sure, so at a minimum, if no variances are applied for, this would be subject to a preliminary plat and a final plat. And because there are blufflands in the southeast corner of this property, it would go in front of the planning commission and city council twice. So once for the preliminary plat and then once for the final plat.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
Mayor, I would approve the request as submitted.
We have a motion from George, a second from Steve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes.
Item two point two is the two-ten Ben Street rezoning from I one Light Industrial to M U N Mixed Use Neighborhood.
Evening again, Mayor and Council. For this agenda item, this is another rezoning that we have. And the request is to go from I one Light Industrial to Mixed Use Neighborhood, M U N, at two-ten Ben Street in Winona. Two-ten Ben Street is highlighted on the screen in front of you in green. Immediately to the south of that is one thousand four West Fifth Street. It's attached to the property via a party wall. Two-ten West Ben Street has historically been used for light industrial style of uses. However, it was designated as commercial slash residential in the two thousand seven comprehensive plan. So what the comprehensive plan did is take a look at this area, saw the mix of uses and designated this particular parcel for that commercial slash residential land use. What that means is that the proposed zoning, the mixed use neighborhood zoning aligns with the comprehensive plan. On April twentieth, the commission reviewed this request and also recommended approval unanimously for the reasons that are shown on your screen. And for this rezoning, the same options are available to council as the first. You could approve, deny, modify the request, or table or postpone the item if there's outstanding questions.
Very good. Thank you, Carlos. I will now open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding item two point two, the two-ten Ben Street rezoning, I one Light Industrial to M U N Mixed Use Neighborhood? I'll ask again if anyone from the public wishes to speak regarding item two point two. I'll ask one more time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak during the public hearing portion of item two point two, two-ten Ben Street rezoning, I one Light Industrial to M U N Mixed Use Neighborhood? Hearing no one, I will now close the public hearing.
Mayor, I would approve the request as submitted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from George. We'll take a second from Steve. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Just a quick question as to, does anybody know why this zoning change is being pursued?
The owner of the property would like to do some type of redevelopment and reuse in the building. He has proposed that in the future to do some multi-unit apartments. But that is yet to be determined what the exact project would be. I guess the main reason this is here in front of council tonight is he's, the first step would be to potentially achieve that mixed use neighborhood zoning so he could put those uses into the building. Right now, he cannot under the existing zoning.
No, obviously, if he's, anything that he's going to propose is going to again, come back to us again with the details of that proposal and that'll run through the normal process via planning commission to us then prior to approval, correct?
With this one, if he is looking at apartment-style dwellings, that is a permitted use in the proposed zoning district, so he would not have to come to council unless something like a variance or a site plan is appealed to council. But it will go through the normal approvals process, which includes most likely site plan and then potential board of adjustment review if needed for a variance.
Okay, yeah, I drove over and took a look at the property. I'm familiar from the past, it was Sherman's Plumbing and what have you. So, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments, questions? Pam?
Yes, Carlos, I noticed, I noticed.
Yes, Carlos, I noticed, I noted in the minutes of the Planning Commission discussion that one of the commissioners asked if the intention was to build one unit per lot, and you responded that this was correct with zero setbacks from lot lines between the units. Zero setbacks.
Yes, the mixed use neighborhood zoning district allows zero setbacks. So you can refurbish an existing building that's lot line to lot line and put units in that building without having to get variances.
Okay, so that will, that will get along well with the surrounding, the surrounding properties.
That's correct. It's kind of on the end of an area that's all designated for this mixed use neighborhood commercial residential classification, so they would all have the same regulations that would apply, so it would fit in well.
Okay, yeah, as long as they're all, they're all lined up there, I get it. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. For the remainder of this meeting, residents are only allowed to speak if they have requests before council, and I have recognized you to speak.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is a request for off-site gambling permit for the Winona Eagles Club.
Would the council adopt the resolution?
Second.
Motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.2 is a request for off-site permit for lawful gambling for the Redmond Club.
Would the council adopt the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is a license agreement with Bird Rides.
Would the council approve the agreement and direct the mayor and city clerk to execute the same?
We have a motion from Steve, a second from Aaron. Any discussion? Jeff?
Yeah, a quick question, you know, I breezed through the license agreement and what have you, and under it, number seven, item number seven, there's a variety of vendor responsibilities as to where these are placed and where they can't be placed and so on and so forth. Who monitors this? Make sure that the vendor is in compliance with the agreement that we're asked to pass?
So Mayor and Council, if we get complaints to the city, we will reach out to the vendor and ask them to put them, you know, they'll move them. If they're not moved within a certain amount of time, we will have our park maintenance staff move them and then charge the vendor. In the few months that they operated last year, we did not have to move any of the scooters, and in my opinion, they did a really good job at making sure they were parked in the correct locations.
Okay, excellent. Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments, questions, discussion? George?
I'm going to support what we have here tonight, but just, just for a comment is that like with these, with these scooters, you know, prohibiting them from coming around the lake, you know, okay, but I think, you know, if you're on one, you probably want to go around the lake. The same with Levy Park. You go in Duluth where Canal Park is, and they're driving them down the roads, down the sidewalks, down the bike paths and all those things, because that's where people probably like to go and see. I don't know how good it would be at a gaming park with that road all full of potholes, that'd be kind of a rough ride, so. But anyway, like I say, you know, maybe in the future, we can open it up here, and I'm not so much concerned about a scooter being on the lake park path as I would be if a person's driving a Harley-Davidson down that path.
Thanks, George. Any other comments?
I just have a clarification, these are geofence, so they cannot operate in, in the parks. They won't work there.
They turn off.
Yeah. Quite sure.
So yes, depending on how accurate the geo fencing is, it's not precise to, you know, a foot, but within a few feet, I believe you can go into the park, but if you shut the scooter off, you're going to have to push it outside of that area to get it to start up again.
Okay. Once you come off throttle, it won't reactivate if you're within the geofence. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.4 is a massage therapy license for Elizabeth Hagenson.
Would the council approve the license?
Second.
Motion from Steve, I'll take the second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.5 is the Summit Street closure request for May 20th.
Would the council approve the request?
Second.
Motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion? I'll just say it's awesome that they're having a block party up there. Good to see. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.6 is a request for the Winona International and Sprint Triathlon to be held on June 11th.
I would, to approve the license agreement and to direct the city manager and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Steve. Any discussion? We do have Lindsay from Trynona here, if anybody has any questions for her.
Does she want to say anything, or?
Would you like to say anything?
Okay.
All right.
Fine. Can we ask her to say something?
You can ask her to say something, you may direct her to say something if you like.
No, we'll only get rid of the app.
If there's anything new that's happening.
Could we hear about the route, maybe?
Sure. So with the knowledge that possibly there was going to be road construction up on Gilmore, we didn't want to deal with the issue we had last year with the road construction, so we just decided to change the international route just to be safe. So for, right now, they leave the transition area and they're actually going to go straight up Garvin, go out to 21, and then back down Garvin Heights Road. It actually works best for us because we eliminate a lot of volunteer spots, and also it gets Garvin Heights Road open faster and eliminates the need for people out on the road for a longer time. So it actually worked out pretty well, and it only lessened the international bike course by one mile.
Thank you.
So that's the only change.
Hope for great weather. Thank you.
Yes, hopefully. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
What's, how many years has that been going on now?
13.
13.
Two, we missed because of COVID. This will be our 13th year.
Excellent.
The 11th, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will be abstaining. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.8 is a request by the Minnesota Bass Nation to hold a bass tournament in Spark.
Would the council approve the request?
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion? Good tournament. Very good.
How many times is, how many times they've been doing this one? Does anybody know? Is this a regular thing?
I don't know.
So, but be the fourth or fifth?
That's four.
Yeah, fourth or fifth time that I think they've been in Winona. Okay.
Great. Great. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And item 3.9 is the Winona Real Estate Fund License Agreement Parking.
Would the council introduce the ordinance and approve the agreement and direct the mayor and city clerk to execute the same?
I will second that.
A motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion? We do have Lucy McMartin here, if you have any questions. Please.
Lucy, so is this an unusual agreement, or is this, has this agreement been struck with other local housing units?
Mayor and Council, yes, we have done agreements in the past. They've usually been for an area to park, and what we find if it's a geographic location, we have unused parking stalls. So we moved to this permit system, and this particular agreement goes for one year with a one-year renewal, because it is a little bit new with the permit system.
Yes, thank you. I do know of other places that have requested this kind of situation in the lots around them, so.
So usually when there's a significant project and we're meeting with a developer, you know, and it involves, you know, I think we did this at 102 Walnut, 111 Riverfront, we did some, so it's usually the larger projects.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And Lucy, just a quick review, I mean, I know we talked about this once in an earlier meeting as we were working up to this, but how does this, how does this actually work then?
So Mayor and Council, before you tonight, there's actually two things. In order to implement this, there's an ordinance change, because the ordinance says you can only park in that parking lot 14 for 12 hours. The second piece is the Port Authority can issue 18 parking permits, and the Exchange Building has 16 of their own stalls, I believe, so the extra ones in Lot 14 will be used as they rent those Airbnbs and long-term rental units.
Okay.
And it would be in the rearview mirror hooking them.
Okay, so just a hook. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Lucy? Comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under New Business, item 5.1 is the Vacated Washington Street Partial Release of Mortgage.
Would the council authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the document?
Motion from Steve, a second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.2 is the International Association of Firefighters, 23 through 25 bargaining agreement.
Would the council adopt the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.3 is the Winona Public Library Elevator Contract.
Would the council approve the agreement and direct the mayor and city clerk to execute the same?
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from, was it Jeff? I'm sorry.
I mean.
Jerome. Second from Jerome. Any discussion? We do have Leslie Dolkey here, if we have any questions.
If she has anything she'd like to add, or?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are looking forward to getting this project underway. We're told it will take a six-week timeline from start to finish, but the building can remain open during that timeframe.
Is there, obviously, this will impact accessibility. Do you have any plans for how to work? I'm assuming you do. How are you going to work through that?
Similarly to when we were operating with curbside services over the pandemic, we will be sending staff up the stairs as runners, because we won't be able to book truck books in the elevator to re-shelve or fetch materials.
Well, thank your staff for working through that with us. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions for Leslie? No? Thanks, Leslie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.4 is the Bluff Prairie Restoration Grant Application.
Would the council authorize staff to submit the grant application?
Second.
Motion from Steve, a second from George. We do have John Howard here, if anyone has any questions for him. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And item 5.5 is the City Employee Holiday Schedule for Juneteenth.
Would the council approve the amendment to the City of Winona Employee Handbook and implement the policy to include Juneteenth as a paid holiday?
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from Jerome. Any discussion? George?
Now, does Chad have anything to explain on this? And I talked with Deb this morning, and she was going to pass it on to you. My question being, how does this affect, it says for non-union, how does this affect the union employees?
So Mayor and Council, the first step in order to recognize this as a paid holiday, the council needs to approve the holiday as a city holiday. The council must then approve the holiday as a paid holiday for non-union employees. Union member holidays are specifically listed in each collective bargaining agreement. And so then for union employees to receive the holiday as paid, we must then negotiate to amend their agreements, and in that case, we add the holiday into their section of their collective bargaining agreement. So assuming that you approve this tonight, a notice will go out to the unions tomorrow with, in a sense, our desire to amend the agreement and to allow the holiday be a paid holiday within the collective bargaining agreements. So much like how we do wages in some years with employees, we do non-union first, and then we go back in the collective bargaining agreement with those units and add those wages or negotiate those wages. In this case, same kind of format, we set the holiday with non-union, then go back and negotiate with the unions. In this case, I would assume that there's not going to be much negotiation, the unions are going to get a paid holiday, and so we likely will bring these back. The amendments to all the union contracts likely come back the next couple of meetings. Of course, we are trying to do this before Juneteenth of 2023.
Thank you.
Or you can take that day off, too. You can take Juneteenth off as well now.
Yes, I plan on.
Okay, very good. Excellent.
Mayor and Council, it's a good segue. I should mention that when we adopt the Juneteenth as a holiday, the council meeting does fall on June 19th, and so we will have to adjust our council schedule for next month as well. So you reminded me, we did not put that in the agenda item, but when you reminded me when you said George gets the night off, technically, we'd need to move the council meeting as well.
Good. Thanks, Jen. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Councilmember Borzakowski.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. First of all, we're working on, they're working on the roundabouts again, just your patience. They're completing the project from last year, curb and gutter landscaping. Yes, it gets a little backed up, but it keeps slowly going through. So your patience here for about the next four weeks, five, whatever it may be, but the project will be coming to a complete end this year. And also, I would like to thank the Knights of Columbus last weekend, myself being one of the volunteers, going out and soliciting funds with their Tootsie Roll Drive, and those funds go to help mentally challenged people, physically challenged people in our community. So it was a very, very good fundraiser, and as I understand, very successful as well, too. And also, too, I'd like to join the manager in wishing Police Officer Ed Wooden a very good and healthy retirement. And as I was coming in, I mentioned to a couple of council members, I seen a squad car, and I thought the person in there had gray hair, but they did not, so. Not too many gray hairs left in there, so. But they serve us well, Ed served us well, and we have a very good police department. We can be very, very proud of for the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Ida.
Well, spring is here, and everyone's thinking about their garden and about the, perhaps the pollinators. Some people are thinking about the pollinators. The reason that you don't have to rake your, rake your garden and clean everything up is to protect the pollinators, right? You've all heard that. Well, also happening right now is the Board of Water and Soil Resources is once again accepting applications for the Lawns to Legumes Program, which is a program that will reimburse homeowners for money they spend to create native plantings. And it's a wonderful program, a lot of
And it's a wonderful program. A lot of people out in out in Pleasant Valley have created a corridor of of pollinator-friendly plantings. And the program is open again. Anyone who lives in Minnesota and has an area for outdoor planting can apply for this. And that's why I would point you to the Board of Water and Soil Resources for more information about the program. Or you can contact me. That's all.
Very good. Thanks, Pam. Councilmember Young?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Councilmember Rapinski?
Uh, nothing, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hama?
Uh, nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Christiansen?
Uh, just a note of thanks and gratitude and congratulations to Brian and the city crews for keeping the Mississippi out of my lawn. It's much appreciated by me and everyone else. And Pam, I will take the hint and shirk on my lawn care duties and remind everybody, no mo may.
That's right. Very good. Thank you, Jerome.
And under the consent agenda, there are approval of the minutes from April seventeenth.
Second.
Motion from Steve, a second from George. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor being seven twenty P M, I move we adjourn.
Motion from George, second from Pam. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good job.